Okay, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. If able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Pate.
Here.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Here.
Councilmember Hands.
Here.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Here.
Councilmember Leahy.
Here.
Councilmember Neal.
Here.
Councilmember Ryder.
Here.
Councilmember Silvers.
Here.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item up is public items. Members of the public are encouraged to use this time to make comments about matters that do not appear on the agenda. Comments about items on the very agenda will be taken up as each item is considered. Please note, individuals making public comments will be limited to five minutes. We did have this blue sheet here, which is currently blank, but that doesn't preclude anybody from that may not have signed up for the public hearing or meeting to come forward and speak at this time. Does anyone like to come forward? Talk about anything that's not on the agenda. I see no one rushing to the podium, so we will close out public items. Next item up is the consent agenda. Any items listed under the heading are considered to be routine. By the City Council, may be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which case that item be removed. Considering we only have one item on the agenda, is he might want to discuss that before I entertain a motion? Okay, well, I will entertain a motion for that then. Okay, Mr. Silvers.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the council approve Consent Agenda Item 1.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Ms. Hands.
I'll second that.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, next item up is the Mayor's Report, and the first item on that is Employee Service Awards, Second Quarter 2024. Ms. Card, are you going to be handling that?
Absolutely. We're recognizing three of our employees tonight. If first we could please have Brandon Bates please come forward, and Chief McLaughlin. Brandon has been with us for five years and is a master police officer. Next, we have Councilmember Jason Silver celebrating his five-year council-iversary. Last but certainly not least, if we could have Julie, please come forward. Julie is celebrating Team 20 Years of Service. Congratulations, everyone.
It's always nice to recognize those individuals that have given so much of their time to our city. Looks like the next item up is we have a second quarter new employee introductions.
We sure do. Traditionally, we do this item with just our new Police Department employees, but we have, while they are super important to our organization, we have lots of new employees. HR does a fabulous job of recruiting for our vacant positions. Side note, these are not new positions, they're being filled. We had people in them before, but people move on, and now we have five fantastic new employees for our organization. So we want to introduce them. If I say your name, will you please come forward, and we will take a group photo as you're introduced? Our first one is our Recreation Coordinator in our Parks and Recreation Department, Chloe Holmes, joined us on May 20th. Also, in our Parks and Recreation Department, Recreation Intern Jenna Wilson joined us on May 28th. In our Police Department, Police Officer John Kissert joined us on March 4th. Police Officer Devon Allen joined us on April 2nd. And Police Intern Lily Fankhauser joined us on May 29th. So welcome our quarter two new employees to Team Merriam.
All right. Nice to actually meet people and put a name with the face. Okay, the next item up on the Mayor's Report is a proclamation. I always love reading the proclamations. Oh, thank you. I felt really safe while you guys were all here, so.
Extra safe 100, infinity.
Thanks, we really appreciate it. All right. The proclamation, however, is not for the Police Department, but this is what it is for. Whereas, the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month. And whereas, park and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout the country, including Merriam. And whereas, park and recreation are vitally important to maintaining the quality of life in our community, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of our community. And whereas, parks and recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of our community members. And whereas, parks and recreation encourage physical activities by providing space for fitness classes, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote healthy and active lifestyles, including educational activities and citywide special events. And whereas, the City of Merriam recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources. Now therefore, I, Bob Pate, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as the Mayor of Merriam, Kansas, do hereby proclaim July 2024 as Parks and Recreation Month, proclaimed on this 8th day of July 2024. Bob Pate, Mayor. Give them a award. Would we like, do we want a picture of giving this to our Park and Recreation? Let me bring it to her.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I want to be sure everyone knows there's a really wonderful video celebrating that it's Parks and Recreation Month. It's on every social outlet that we are part of, and it's really fun, so be sure and check it out.
There you go, check it out. Thank you for bringing it up. Okay, let's see, other items I have. I always like to say a few words about things that's been going on for the last two weeks with our council and myself. So I'll go through this rather quickly. Okay, I went to lunch with Jen Skunover, one of our Art Committee members. We had a nice discussion about the art plan and the committee's excitement about its implementation. I and Councilmember Jacob Leahy assisted staff and volunteers with the marking of the flags for Freedom Fields. Councilmember Hands made an appearance to make sure we were working, but I also understand that she also did some work prior to our arrival. So I and Councilmember Hands, Silvers, and Ryder attended the Employee Appreciation Event for the great job that they've been doing. We celebrated the results of the ETI survey, where we got outstanding results. Hopefully, you've seen those. I and Councilmember Silvers attended the OPFD Station 41 Grand Opening. Thank you, Chief Long, for inviting us. It was a great building, it's a well-designed station, and should provide another 50 years of service. I and Councilmember Hands and Leahy and numerous volunteers and staff installed the flags at Farmer's Market. A big thanks goes out to both our Park and Recreation and Public Works Department for all they did to make this happen. A big thanks goes out to Walgreens for Brian Water and Krispy Kreme for writing the donuts. These two companies have assisted us for many years. Okay, I and Councilmember Hands attended the 4th of July Celebration. The American Legion Band of Greater Kansas City provided a wonderful performance of patriotic music. We had two food trucks and great attendance. I had numerous individuals tell me what a great event this is and look forward to it again next year. I attended the Vernon Place Annual Picnic. I got to speak to numerous residents about all the great things that was going on in Merriam. I attended the Eric Averez Group Picnic and their celebration for another successful business year. Councilmember Silvers attended the Merriam Drainage Board Meeting. Thank you for representing us at that event. And we're off to page two. I attended the OPFD Retirement Monthly Breakfast Meeting where they all want to know what's going on in Merriam, and I gave them an update to that group. I and Councilmember Hands met with Assistant City Administrator Caitlin Guard and made up tonight's agenda. She's currently, she probably figured out filling in for Mr. Engel, and so if you have any really tough questions, feel free to use them this evening, and we'll see how she holds up. But I, Councilmember Hands, numerous volunteers and staff took down the flags. Another successful event that was well-received by the public. We couldn't put on that event without the participation of many individuals. Special thanks goes out to our Flags for Freedom Committee members for all the hard work that they did. And a special thanks goes out to staff members Anna Slocum, Renee Nagel, and Margot Allen, and our intern, which we just met this evening, Jenna Wilson, who were instrumental in making that event happen. So that concludes my report. Did I miss anybody for anything else that might have occurred? Mr. Leahy.
I was also at the Employee Appreciation Lunch.
Oh, I'm sorry. I think I even had that. Did I not mention you?
Didn't hear it.
I apologize, because I think I didn't have you on there. I told Ms. Card I'd be reading really fast, so I think I skipped over you. But, yeah, thank you. All right, anybody else, anything else? Okay, all right. Well, that concludes the Mayor's Report. First item up for council items is consider approval of an ordinance to establish common consumption area and authorizing possession consumption for the license to be done. Is that?
Yes, I'll take this. So this is the second reading of our common consumption area that we are establishing for the Merriam Grand Station Development. No changes since the last time we reviewed this. We do have Scott Miller here from Drake Development. If council has any operational questions, he would be able to answer those. But staff is recommending approval.
Does anyone have any questions for our city clerk? No questions? We don't need Scott to come up either? Well, I think if we're ready to move forward, I would entertain a motion. Ms. Hands.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I move that the council approve an ordinance establishing a common consumption area and authorizing the possession and consumption of alcoholic liquor within its boundaries in the Merriam Grand Station Development.
Okay, I have a motion, direct her second. Ms. Yodrich.
Mr. Mayor, second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we have a motion, second.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item up is consider approval of amendment to the Community Development Block Grant. Looks like we got Director Dyer coming to the podium.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Since 2003, the City of Merriam has participated with Johnson County and the other smaller communities and Olathe in a cooperative agreement for the distribution of community development block grants. That agreement renews every two years automatically unless we decide to pull out of it. Over the number of years we've been beneficiaries of CDBG funding primarily for our streetlight program. The CDBDG Program, Community Development Block Grant Program, is administered by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. And HUD, which is Housing and Urban Development, has requested that the county makes modifications to those cooperative agreements. There's a short, brief outline of what those modifications are. But again, for in order for us to continue to participate in our cooperation agreement with the county, we will have to modify our agreement with the county per HUD's request and standards. So again, just kind of a little bit of formality, but yeah, it needs to come before the council for your all's consideration or proven approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Director Dyer? Okay, I see no questions. With that, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve Amendment Number Two to the CDBG and Home Cooperation Agreement between the City and Johnson County Board of County Commissioners, and authorize the mayor to sign the amendment.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Ms. Yodrich.
Mr. Mayor, second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we have a motion, a second.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item up would be the Single Hauler Waste Service Discussion. We've got Ms. Card coming forward to the podium.
Happy to help.
That's Team Merriam at work.
Look at that. Thank you, Anna. Okay, so tonight, staff is seeking direction on this item. This isn't a topic that's new to you all. We had a work session about it specifically earlier this year when we were discussing the annual council goals. You can see that you all have established to investigate this topic as one of your goals. So we brought forward more information to you, and at the end of this presentation, hopefully, you will give staff direction on next steps. Currently, there are five solid waste providers in Merriam. You can see them here. No real new ones or have had any changes, maybe some name changes over the past few years, but these are traditionally the solid waste providers. We currently are on a private trash contrast contract system. I'm going to go through some pros and cons of keeping a private trash system or going to a single hauler trash providing system. You can see here that if we keep the private system or the current system that we have now, the pros are, obviously, there's no changes. There is a significant amount of state statute and regulations around going towards a single hauler trash or waste pickup system. A lot of hoops for us to jump through. I've outlined those in your packets. Not that it's not doable. Obviously, a number of communities have done it, but it is a very lengthy timeline. So you can see, we would not have to have any changes. Currently, we know that some residents are using shared service, which obviously makes that a little bit cheaper for them. A pro for the current system is the natural competition, freedom of choice, what contractor you have, and the city doesn't oversee the program. You can change providers whenever you want, negotiate your own contract, stuff like that. Cons for that, it is more expensive if a single individual or a small group of individuals is on a contract versus, obviously, a scalable contract that would be cheaper by individual if it were larger. There is increased truck traffic because there are five providers providing service throughout the community, not just one. Obviously, that leads to more emission and noise from the trucks, and then also damage on our roads. We have five times the amount of trucks going on our roads every day or week. Almost the exact opposite switched. If we were to go to a single hauler, what the city would actually do is negotiate the contract with a rate for one or multiple years. So we would know exactly what that is per resident, per household. More residents would save money on their trash. It would look a little bit different in the payment system. It would be assessed on their property tax bill, so it would like, look like an additional line item on their property tax bill, but they wouldn't be paying that separate contract like they are doing now. We would have decreased truck traffic. We would only have it one day, one day per week, probably one day for trash and one day for recycle, or one day for yard waste. That would be negotiated in the contract, but it would indeed be less truck traffic because we would be with one provider, not five providers. The cons are the pros on the other side. Obviously, the individuals wouldn't have freedom of choice. That contract would be negotiated on their behalf, and everybody would be required to have this service. We wouldn't, it would be very difficult to administer a shared service type of contract, and so we would do it by address. And then, as I mentioned, it would be billed as a solid waste fee on their property tax bill. Some comments that we received were that would just be another tax. Probably people not thinking that they wouldn't have to pay that bill separately, but it would be on their property tax bill. We surveyed some of our neighboring communities to see how they provide or don't provide waste management services. So you can see here, this is actually the exact same spreadsheet you saw earlier this year. There are no changes. But you can see the larger communities of Shawnee, Overland Park, and Lenexa do not provide single hauler services, but our other smaller communities do, who their hauler is, how that, if it's being notorious or not, if they do residential or commercial HOAs or not. The term that they're billed on, how they're billed, and then if there is any staff time associated with that. I will say, all the communities that we surveyed have had this service for a number of years. I would assume after the initial, this is new to us, the residents really don't know what's going on. Hopefully, the complaints would go down, but I believe you all read the Johnson County Post and can see on a number of occasions, even recently, some of the issues that these communities have been having. So we would, and as City Administrator Engel mentioned at our last meeting, we would have staff time associated with this. Really, just even managing the contract itself. It would be an additional service that we provide. And then you can see the costs here as well. Those are probably significantly cheaper from what you or I pay on our solid waste services right now. So we're almost certain that it would be cheaper for the residents. While we were surveying all of our local communities, we got a number of comments about how not only managing a solid waste contract is difficult, but the literal transition from an individual, single contracted service to a single hauler is excruciating in some of the words that you see here. This is from the administration of those organizations, and so, not that it can't be done, obviously, many of them have already done it, but it's going to be a difficult process, but we can, something we can certainly work through if that's the direction you all give. So we asked the community what we think that they would like, and so we asked in our 2024 community survey if Merriam should implement a citywide contract to provide trash and recycling service. And you can see that 36% strongly agreed and 29% agreed. So that's a pretty significant amount of individuals that filled out the survey request that we implement such a contract. We asked this question in a group of other questions prioritizing programs. I think there are about five or six. What is that, 44% say that a single, a citywide contract to provide trash service should be our highest or second highest priority. That's why we're having this conversation this evening. So we went back and we researched what this process would look like. There are really three major steps in, or milestones, I suppose, in the process. One of the last slides is kind of like what next steps are, but if you are to direct us to move forward, the next thing we would do is go to a resolution of intent to organize collection service. This is essentially, that would be our first real public announcement. You all would pass this resolution. We would have to have a public hearing on it, very public, that we're going single hauler trash service. From then, we would develop a plan. We do, are required by the State of Kansas to work with all the licensed trash haulers to develop this plan. And state statute gives us a window on when that plan needs to be adopted. The plan can include a number of different things. Number of, number of times a month, trash is picked up, number of times a month recycling is picked up, who owns the trash bins, how the trash bins are maintained. So there's a lot of detail that goes into that plan. I'm assuming that's why it would take so long to develop. But that would be the second step, and then once that is developed, there is a very, very long window that we are required to wait between step one and step three. Step three is essentially the final step in establishing our organized collection service. There is a detailed timeline in your packet. I know it's really small font, I apologize. But that would essentially be the plan that staff would work off of. These are best-case scenario timelines. And I mean, like, we're not going to miss any deadlines. Not that we love to miss deadlines, but you know, stuff happens. Maybe we need to have another public meeting, or maybe we need to do another mailer, or maybe we need to do something along those lines that we just haven't considered. I've not gone through this process, so I'm not exactly sure, but we have gone through the state statutory windows and came up with this best-case scenario timeline for you. I would reluctantly put that in the packet because as soon as you give people dates, people like to stick to dates. But I wanted to give you all a kind of an expectation on what that window would look like. If you direct us to move forward this evening, we hopefully can bring you a resolution of intent in October. With that window, we could develop the plan later this year, probably fall, early winter, and then have that window expire in spring-ish of next year. From then, once that plan is developed and adopted, the state does require the community to give 18 months essentially notice to the haulers that are currently contracted with the residents. You're probably all on a contract right now to some degree. Let that contract expire, and then you can roll on to the city's contract, is really what that window is for. With that, these are your three options tonight. You can direct us to move forward. Like I said, that next step would be the resolution of intent. You could say, thanks but no thanks, or you could say, hey, I don't have enough information. Given the conversations that we've had, I need more direction on ABC. That's the information I have for you.
Good, Ms. Leahy.
Do you know what the other issues we asked about in the poll that residents thought were also first, second, and third priority?
I do. It's sitting on my desk.
Roughly, I tried to look in the last presentation from last.
Downtown, implement a better, something better downtown, public art, open burning, trash, and I feel like there's a fifth one.
All right, I mean, so generally, all things that we're also still working on, so.
Absolutely, yeah.
Go ahead, Ms. Silvers.
In the list of milestones that you had on there, the three points, at what point can we, do we decide go, no go? Like, if all the haulers come back and... Like, um, if all the haulers come back and their prices aren't what we had hoped and will maybe cost residents more than we expected? Um, at what point can we pull back and say this is not something that we want to pursue? Even though we've had public meetings, we've passed resolutions?
Yeah, at any point, actually. We could even get past step milestone number three. And, um, you all are at a new city council, if it's after the election. Um, at any point could withdraw that, that ordinance or resolution. And we could essentially reverse the work that we've done.
Jason's point, so we could solicit bids for contracts and then after opening them all decide that none of them are worth exploring and call it off?
Yes.
Are there questions for Ms. Card? Go ahead, Ms. Card.
I'm sorry, this is no question, so you're kind of off, off the table for now. But, um, I did talk to some council members from other municipalities that have single hauler and, um, their reaction was, uh, kind of exactly how I'm feeling, which is, um, on the fence a bit. It's great for residents when it works and when the system goes according to plan. Um, but when it doesn't, it's bad. And, um, I like the idea of that Prairie Village implemented, which is finding the, um, finding the provider. But they have also fined their provider twenty-eight grand in the last, what, six months, year, something like that. Um, and I've heard similar stories of HOAs with waste manage, with other haulers. Um, and, and the, there are multiple haulers that have had fines. Um, and, you know, when that happens, you have to wonder, like, where are people going to put their trash? And are we gonna, what are we going to do about our codes that say people have to hide their trash bins? What are we gonna, you know, we have to think about those things in advance and how we prepare and, and mitigate for those situations.
Or what happens when.
Right, what happens when that.
I will say, you know, uh, I mentioned we did solicit information from the administrators, but I've had a number of conversations with public works directors too. Because if the trash isn't picked up, like, something has to happen with it. Like, I don't want to, like, supplement the work of the provider. Like, certainly something should be done there, but if the trash isn't picked up, I mean, somebody's going to have to pick it up. And whether that be a public works department that already has a full-time job to do, so pulling them off street maintenance or any of the other jobs that they're doing, um, it would put a burden on our staff, certainly.
So, right, which would be great with the fining process, right? Which is how you get their attention. But the other side of this is, is it's great for our infrastructure. It's better for our air quality. Um, it's more convenient for the residents as long as the, the bid process works and the rate process works in our favor. Um, but there's also the advantage of having, you know, our own mini version of capitalism when it, when it comes to these things. So there are other cities out there and other council members out there. If you guys want to talk to them as well and get their feedback, it would be, and HOAs in other cities and things like that that, that do this and have had a variety of experiences recently.
Go ahead, Mr. Silver.
I have also been hearing a little bit about fines, but what I haven't heard about, and I don't know if you know, Caitlin, um, have, they been paying their fines? Have the trash haulers been paying their fines?
I don't know the answer to that. I, I would assume they are, but I don't know that for sure.
But just to jump in, so I, you're referring to them as fines. I think what they really are is, is, uh, a measure in contracts that are called liquidated damages, where if they miss pickups, they automatically have to pay. Um, it's not a fine where they get taken to municipal court. Um, it's just, I mean, it's a much more expedited process than you might think of, um, with that. I would also add, I've got, between you all and I've got four other communities that represent, two of them have single hauler, uh, Merriam does not, one of my other communities does not. Um, the community, the other community that I've got, uh, and I actually have a community that is big enough that does all of their own pickup. They have their own sanitation department. You're going to have a myriad of issues in whatever system you pick. Um, you know, the, the issue with pickup most recently in the communities that I have with single hauler, and I, it, it was a rampant problem, not just with the single haulers, because the single haulers are also hauling for multiple haulers, is they couldn't find anyone with the CDL to go out and, and drive a truck. Because the, the, the demand for people with CDLs was so high and people were paying hiring bonuses. And if you can go drive for UPS versus driving a trash truck and you get a hiring bonus, the decision's pretty easy. Um, so that, that's been, um, my recent experience with all of this. And I usually don't speak up and talk about this, but I kind of have a unique perspective in that I've dealt with all the systems and the legal issues surrounding ev- basically every way you can crack this egg. Um, and, you know, you might be reading about it in the Johnson County Post and single hauler because there is a single hauler. But I guarantee if you've got five people who are picking up, there are people who aren't showing up of your, uh, private contractors every week or every month. It's the same issue, it's just not making the news because it's not a single hauler, so.
Thank you, Mr. Link. Okay, um, I do have one question concerning, and I, what other cities might be doing in reference to, um, HOAs that have their own trash? Are, are they included in as part of the overall city? Do they have to give up theirs or not? Or can we write the contract either way we want?
The latter. Um, so, communities do it all different ways. They, they, you can exempt an HOA, you would, you would develop that as part of the contractor, um, when you develop the plan, whether we want to include our HOAs or we do not want to include our HOAs, whether it could be an opt-in or an opt-out, um, in reference to their individual contracts.
Gotcha. Okay, Ms. Ryder.
Sorry, um, I saw something about Mark Cooperative Purchasing, um, with GFL in Roland Park, Fairway and Westwood. Can you speak to that and if there are other haulers that are on that cooperative purchasing?
Yeah, so, uh, the Mid-America Regional Council essentially has a regional contract for solid waste services and, um, Fairway, Roland Park and Westwood are all on that contract. GFL is the one that won that bid, uh, last year, earlier this year, the last time they did it.
Yeah, they, they, so I represent Westwood. Um, they've had different providers at different times. They've had Duffenbaugh, which became Waste Management. They, I think they had Town and Country for a while, now they've got GFL. It just goes out on a, every so often cycle. And it's really just about, um, none of those communities is really big enough to have enough buying power to get attention of the major haulers by themselves. So by working cooperatively with the Mid-America Regional Council, um, they've been pretty successful. As you can see, the rate is pretty inexpensive compared to others. But I, I think that there might be room in that process to, through Mark. I don't know, Caitlin, if you looked at that or not.
Yeah, um, it would definitely be during the, the plan development phase, we would inquire with Mark about, uh, essentially jumping onto that contract.
Yeah.
Um, if that's even allowable. Uh, we're just not there yet.
Yeah, no, I understand completely. I just, I've worked with cooperative purchasing contracts in my day job and they are usually a better way to go. And so I was really intrigued by that when I saw it in the packet, so. And that rate is a lot lower than what I pay now, so.
Go ahead, Ms. Ryder.
Um, I guess this would be more of a question for you. Uh, when, like, Westwood and stuff has switched companies, do they have the same issue with, like, the transitional issues and stuff? Do they have those all over again every time they switch?
Yeah, I'm trying to remember. I mean, um, I think on a lot of occasions, you know, that they have transitioned the, whatever, the pickup, the bins, thank you. Um, as long as they're, they work with the new providers, um, technology, and I think they're all pretty standard anymore. Um, I don't, I don't really hear a lot of, um, people being upset or a lot of discord about any of that. Um, you know, part of what we do as part of this process is when you move to a single hauler, you all are required to adopt an ordinance that says exactly how pickup's going to go. What can, what can, and what can go in refuse? What can go in recycling? What you have to do with yard waste? And it used to be more flexible, but the county, um, has, because they basically all, I think, they all dump at the county landfill now. And so the county, through, um, their Department of, of Health and Environment, has adopted very specific regulations. And Caitlin and I were just talking about this before. So everybody's providing the same service, it's just who can provide it most efficiently.
Um, follow-up to that, I will say, um, some of the comments we got from, um, at least the larger communities that we inquired about is the biggest issue was the initial bin changeout. Um, with there being five providers, um, as City Attorney mentioned, we would have to very much coordinate who, when, where, how, drop off, pickup. Are we doing it or is the provider doing it? Uh, it, it would have to be a, a really big coordination. Not that it can't be done, but certainly.
Go ahead, Ms. Silver.
Uh, I believe GFL is new to the region?
Uh, they used to be Town and Co-, it used to be Town and Country, they just changed their name, yeah.
Is that what it is? Okay, because I was.
Not new.
I was wondering if maybe you knew the reason their price is so low is they were trying to get the bid?
Not from what I understand. Um, they're, they're not the newest on the list that I provided to you.
Okay, Ms. Ryder.
Um, I have a question about bins. Um, random, uh, the, did, would the city, is, are there other cities that would like, like, you know, there's cities that have, like, branded bins? Like, I'm thinking Lawrence. So is that something, so like, if you were switching haulers, like, it wouldn't necessarily matter because the city owns the bins? Is that something that, obviously, we talked about in the plan, but just thinking out?
Yes, certainly. Uh, whether we own them or the provider owns them, um, are we the ones coordinating? As the provider, what the ones coordinating? Do we want them to be branded? Do we not want them to be branded? All of that would be developed in the plan.
Perfect, thank you. I have a comment, is that okay?
Okay, sure, go ahead.
Um, in Ward Four, I've heard from a lot of residents that, like, this would be the way that they would like to go. I know that there's people that are going to disagree with that, but personally, and from other people that I've heard, like, the, the disruption of twelve different trucks driving through our neighborhoods and thinking about what that does to our streets and the safety of our neighborhoods because they don't always pay attention. And, um, that's something that makes me really interested in this and from what I've heard from our residents.
Good, Ms. Lahey. I want to add on to that because it, Stacy's right. It's not just five providers, it's ten trucks, fifteen trucks with land, with yard waste. So it's a lot of trucks that we're reducing to, to cut back on the wear and tear on our streets. Um, I said a couple of points I wanted, the, the price is listed up there. Granted, those are contracts that were negotiated, not this year. But that would be a lot of money back in my pocket every year. There'd be a lot of money back in a lot of our residents' pockets every year. And when we look at the poll that we just asked our residents, the majority of our residents want this, or at least want us to explore it. And I don't think we can avoid soliciting bids or going down the path. And then if we find out later that we need to pull the plug and not sign a contract, we can do that. But given the number of residents who want it and want it as the, as a pretty high priority, I don't think we can avoid doing it, or at least avoid exploring the option, I should say. Go ahead, Ms. Silver.
I agree, and I think this has kind of risen to the top because as a result of people now working remotely or spending so much time at home during COVID and are aware of the number of trucks that go up and down our streets, uh, that maybe they never were aware of because they were at an office location, like, every day of the week. Um, but I know, I sit in front of a, my window, you know, three, four days a week, and it's, it's surprising how many trucks go past my, my house.
Okay, Ms. Ryder.
Sorry, me again. I was just thinking from a safety perspective too. I thought, like, dropping my daughter off at school on any of the trash days in our neighborhood is, like, scary and the crossing guard is, like, dodging trash trucks, like, every time. Um, and so that's just something that I think about also, that maybe not everyone experiences in their neighborhood, but just a, a side note from me.
Mr. Callen, yes, sir.
I'd just say, our HOA does ours and we have the benefit of only Friday mornings having three sets of trucks go through, you know? So it's great. Now, I was on the board ten years ago when we went from trash bags to containers. Don't underestimate how upset people get when you mess with their trash. So I think from our perspective, it's a great idea, but we need to staff accordingly because there will be times when it's, it will take staff to manage this. You know, and I, and I can't speak for our HOA, but when I was on the, the board, if we had an option to let the city take it over, we'd jump on that in a heartbeat because it's not a fun task to run. It's not a fun contract to manage. So, I think it's a good idea, but it's just got to be worth the pain we're going to have.
So what you're saying is because you've already been through this, you're going to head it up?
Just, just don't underestimate it.
Okay, Ms., go ahead. Ms. Ryder, you're up.
I just say to summarize this, it seems like the answer's pretty clear. I mean, we've been celebrating the survey results ever since they came in about how we're doing such a great job. And the survey results are telling us exactly what they want. So we should listen to those, just as we listen to them when the positive stuff comes in. They're telling us exactly what they want. Um, and I, it's our job, we were elected to do this. You know, we talk a, a lot about, like, how we make votes and whether we're in the position to be a caretaker or in the position to represent, you know, exactly what constituents want, what we're doing. And this picture is, is clear. And we just need to be able to support our staff to make this an easy transition or less painful transition for them. So our residents can have the amendment or the amenity that they need.
Well, even before that, I just think we, we owe it to the people who asked for us to go ahead and investigate. We don't have to make the decision tonight, but yes, let's investigate.
Okay, I think we've heard from almost everyone. Uh, what do you need from us? Obviously, there's a need to continue our investigation of this item and bring it back to us.
I'm going to assume that you, um, without a vote, are selecting number one and we will start down the path, uh, with a resolution of intent. I hope I can bring that to you in October. That's my goal, per the schedule. I would hate to start out pushing that back already, but hopefully in October I can bring you that resolution of intent.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, it looks like the next item up is the staff information and that's a, uh, July CIP update. Oh, sorry, oh, go ahead. Oh, well, I'm, and we can still do that, but nobody raised their hand when I said you had something later on, but, uh, they weren't on the list. But if you'd like to come forward, Sue, please, please do. And, and anyone else that would, before we move on to the next item, we'll, we will afford you that opportunity.
Sue Walston, sixty-twenty-nine Hemlock, I'm in Ward Four. And I would urge you to take option three to investigate further. I think there's not been enough public comment and enough public awareness of this issue. I talked to some of my neighbors who felt that the question on the survey was poorly worded. They didn't really understand the separation between the different types of trash, you know, trash, recycle, yard waste. And I think that it would behoove the council to get more public input on this before starting a process that you've all agreed is going to be kind of fraught. And, um, I'm, I guess my question is, why don't you do something easy like open burning instead of a single hauler? So, um, I did have a long list of things here. I've come, some of my perspective is that I've been in my house for twenty years. There are people use, all, all kinds of people use my street. Everybody has a different yard service. Everybody has different tree trimmers. Everybody has different, you know, coming and going. And to me, the amount of attention the city would have to give to this is not worth the disruption to everyone else. So, uh, that's my two cents. I'm happy to talk to anybody about it at another time, but I would urge you to consider option three to, to have more listening sessions, get more information out to the public.
Okay, thank you for coming forward.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else else? Okay, go ahead, sir. Please come forward and name and address for the record.
For the Coons, six-six-three-three Wed Street.
Billy Coon, 6633 Wed Street, thanks for listening to people today, and on the surveys and such as well, I live in Ward Four, I live in an HOA that does currently provide communal trash service, well, the neighbors provide that by paying in their dues. And personally, I would not like to see a citywide single hauler, as even the city staff noted, it's promoting socialism, it takes away choice from the residents of the city, and as Bruce noted, it's going to tickle off, a lot of people off, probably no matter what you do, it's going to pee people off, and they're going to be angry. I just came from the HOA board meeting, and I will tell you that the board members all like the idea of single hauler, and I told them I would convey that, so that's message from them, I can understand that, having been a board member for years myself, it is a lot of work, it is a pain in the ass, pardon me, a pain in the butt, and, and to have that on somebody's shoulders who is receiving a salary to do it, would be, would be easy for them, because our HOA board members are totally volunteers, so it would make an easier workload for them, but I think preserving choice and capitalism is worth doing, I think it's one of the things that makes this country great, the state great, the city great, and I'd hate to lose a little bit more of it, I don't think it's in our, our city's charter to be a trash hauler, and I heard Whitney mention, you know, if the majority of people want something, to do something, we should do it, I think there's slightly more to it than that, simple majority wants X, if 51% of people want to take half of the money away from 49% of people, you can't do that, there's, there's right and wrong, there's moral values that you have to consider, and, you know, the nation runs on a constitution, so does the state, the city has a charter of its founding, and I would push you to remain a smaller government, whenever possible, less taxes, this is a tax, if you pass it, that's going to be on everyone's shoulders, people won't get the choice to have cheaper trash service, or none, if they don't need it on their, on their land, when I was single, I didn't produce that much trash, if I could have chosen it, I probably would have just, like, saved it up in the garage or something for three or four months and taken it somewhere, but, yeah, choice is great, please preserve choice, thank you.
Mr. Coon, anyone else like to come forward, talk to this topic? Okay, I guess that's it, okay, thank you for your input, and I assure you, everyone out there, there will be more opportunity for the public to come forward on this topic. Okay, well, let's move right along, and back up to July CIP update, Director Kumpke.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, the July CIP update is in your packet, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, I wanted to give a couple really brief highlights, 50th Terrace and England Project started today, they're going to be starting down at Brown Park and moving up to the north, so you may see that in your neighborhood, the Millan Overlay was supposed to start today as well, but that's going to be delayed a couple weeks, so, but they'll coordinate that work together, and then the only other update that I wanted to provide, since we've been talking about the 75th Street Bridge, I did talk to Overland Park, and they're actually going to send out the request for qualifications this week, so hopefully we will be seeing, you know, a new design-build team and get that project going.
Any questions for Dr. Kumpke, go ahead, Ms. Ryder.
I'm so sorry if you mentioned it, I was taking the, sinkhole on Knox.
Yes.
It's a, it's a buzzword in my neighborhood, yeah.
So it's complicated, aren't they all, but.
We know, we know, we're patient, we're just.
Right, the, I've talked to Water One, and the problem is that they're, it damaged one of our stormwater pipes, so they're trying to find one, it's kind of an odd fee, and they are calling around to find somebody, so I didn't hear from them today, I'm going to contact them again tomorrow, I heard one week to two weeks out to get a pipe, and hopefully they can find one earlier, so that's what they're waiting on, but they're ready to go as soon as, you know, we hear that, so as soon as I get that update, I'll let everybody know, we'll put it out on social media, and then following that repair, there's a couple residents that had some of the AB3 and gravel go into their yards, so we're going to get in, the city's going to go ahead and get in and, and do that work after the street is repaired.
Cool, and I know there's an unprogrammed project in the CIP plan for that exact area to, for, to prevent kind of like that exact thing from happening to their yards, so once this is all done and over with, and we're looking at CIP after this next five years, it might be worth taking a look at that, because that same area's had a lot of seepage and leaking of water in the last couple of years.
Okay.
So I don't know if it's a stress point on the stormwater system, or.
I'll take a look at that unfunded, and I did notice that downstream, when I went in people's backyards, we have a big 54-inch pipe under the road, and then it goes down to this really small swale, so it's like, well, anytime there's a lot of runoff or rain, that's going to be a lot, to be in somebody's yard.
It, it's, there is some choices made.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll look that up tomorrow, I'll call them again tomorrow and try to find out, hopefully they have an answer and a schedule.
Great, thank you, they appreciate the updates, so, thank you so much, okay, thanks.
Any other questions, Director Kumpke? Oh, go ahead, Ms. Silver.
I have a compliment. A while back, you might have been on vacation, I talked to Randy Fines about a street sign I noticed on IKEA Way that was impeding travel for anyone who had accessibility issues, who might be coming to the police station, to court, to the community center, if they, say, took a bus on Shawnee Mission Parkway, and I believe I noticed that it had been moved, opening up the sidewalk, so I want to thank you all for doing that.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions? And please pass on to your staff, the great job they did of putting up the flag horses that, along the streets.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, looks like a finance report for May, Director Oliver's coming to the podium.
Good evening, your finance report was included in the packet, I would be happy to entertain any questions you might have about it.
Any questions for Director Oliver? We're still making money, that's good.
That's good.
Did a good job, maybe Ms. Hans.
And we're not worried that we're a little bit under?
No, you know.
What the projections were.
When it's all said and done on the sales tax, we're going to wind up being pretty flat, I don't think we're going to see growth this year, but, you know, one thing, whenever you see that it looks like we're behind through the budget, to consider.
Is that, okay, that's looking at, it's taking the budget, okay, not to get too technical, but it's taking the budget and dividing it by 12, and multiplying it by that many months, and January, February and March, okay, so that assumes every month we collect approximately the same amount, January, February and March are low sales tax collection months, in comparison to some of the others, and so we're going to see us, we should see some catch-up whenever it looks like we're going against the budget going forward, so I, I think we're going to be okay.
Any other questions? Okay, I see none.
Thank you.
Okay, well, that takes us down to informational items, we had a park and recreation advisory board minutes in our packet, are there no questions for Director Slocum considering that? I see none, okay, thank you. I will turn this over to Ms. Carter, does, do we have anything from staff?
I do, I just have a couple items, just a reminder that City Administrator Ingle is out until the 22nd, so I'm happy to step in in his place, we did a thank you video for the community that you all took a part of, it's posted on our social media, again, thanking them for the great survey results that we received, and then just a couple upcoming events, Family Fun, Family Fun Friday at Quail Creek Park this Friday, 6 to 8 p.m., Cruise Night at 6:30 on Saturday at the Marketplace, and the Cardboard Boat Regatta at 10 a.m. at the Community Center on Sunday, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Carter? Okay, I see no questions for you, I don't have anything else, there is no executive session, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hans.
I move we adjourn.
We have a motion, we have a second, Ms. Ryder.
Mr. Mayor, I move we adjourn, and I second it, sorry. I was thinking about.
Yeah, do motions in a second.
We're good.
Please, go ahead, call.
All in favor.
Aye.
Meetings adjourned.